All folks who mute their cell phones, please. Put them out of the crash. And I'm totally in pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ten o'clock, now open session. Are there any public comments?
You need to be powered up.
Yeah.
Oh, yes you do.
Thank you. Frank, do you have a comment?
Thanks for inviting me.
Next question, coming? If there's no public comment, then the next time out is ten-ten, so we wait for the hearing on vacation request. And we'll go down to, first off, we have two additions, jail plumbing work and a property tax section. And we did the O L C C temporary use yesterday.
That's correct.
So. Public health, Oregon Health Association, no, Oregon Health Authority, grant agreement one-five-one-seven-zero-six. We went over this yesterday.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we went over this yesterday. It's an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. It's a hundred thousand dollars total. I'll move to approve grant agreement number one-five-one-seven-o-six between the state of Oregon and Lake County.
Second. Most have been made in second. Any other discussions? This is money from the state Department of Health Authority to a public health department. It's a yearly thing to fund different projects in public health. It used to be seventy-five thousand, they cut it to a hundred thousand this year. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
How about the cancellation of public tax question?
Do you want me to go get Mr. Mills?
Go ahead and bring Dave in.
And Mr. Chairman, on the plumbing, Dave needed to run down the incubator building and work with the client down there. And I told him he'd present it everything yesterday, but we would just let you know.
Darwin will not be here for the occasion, please. Only Dave, good morning. Hey, Dave, come on up and tell us what this cancellation of property taxes, what we think of the ordinance.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dave.
We have an abandoned manufacturing home in North Lake in the Crystal Valley downside in Canyon Avenue. I discovered it in two thousand eight. It's a rental property home, which means the owner of the home didn't own the land. He abandoned it. His name was John Potter. He moved to Washington. He later is deceased. This property, at that time, I dropped the value of this manufacturing home at two hundred dollars, salvage value, given the condition of it. The property owners, the real property, just sold in March two thousand fourteen. The new owners called and asked about what they could do with it. I said, you bought the property, you inherited the home. They destroyed it this year. And I went up and verified it just this last month. It has gone. And so, I would like to call this an uncollectible tax. And the amount is, is on the tax only, is twenty-eight dollars and forty-four cents. There is also additional fees and interest that we write off. But the actual tax is what I have to come to commission for, and that's the amount. So it's a pretty straightforward thing. We've been kind of working on this one a little bit. We've been waiting for it to be dismantled. They were trying to get it off the tax roll earlier. And I said, as long as it has walls, it's still a manufacturing home. So that's what we got.
And the taxes were due by the previous owner, who is deceased.
Yes, and they gave back. Two thousand seven or something.
I bet you people wish their taxes were only twenty-eight dollars.
Well. In this particular case, you get what you pay for.
You go there. I don't have the number in front of me.
I don't have a number either, or I lost it on my cover sheet. But we're doing the order, and you and Mr. Bailey will be doing the petition.
Okay.
It's included.
Yeah. I'll make a motion that we approve the cancellation of taxes. And the matter of cancellation of property taxes, there's not an order number.
Orders don't have numbers. Twenty-two, twenty.
Then that's my motion. And the amount of twenty-eight dollars and forty-four, forty-four cents.
I'll second your motion.
Most have been made in second to accept the cancellation of the person the property taxes have mentioned. Looking, is there a description?
It's nineteen-seventy.
We have a description or account number.
We have an account number seven-three-one-one-four, and it's early seventies, single white manufactured home.
Make sure we have on record, which one for cancel.
I'll put that on there. I didn't really encourage you to have it on order. All right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys, for helping me think this out.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it.
I'm going to go with the jail plumbing. The jail plumbing, if you notice at the far end where the accessories office used to be and the sheriff's office is being remodeled. The accessories folks moved to the south end of the hallway, close to the clerk's office, and remodeling that area to make the sheriff larger and also to bring in adult population. But this specific topic has to do with plumbing from the jail above. This building is built back in nineteen, early fifties. Plumbing leak each. We patched and repatched for years. And what we're doing now is to put in all the new stuff in, so, because we're always getting leaks coming down into that section of the courthouse. And this subject is for aborting the contract with the Card Plumbing and Heating Company, Contaminant Walls, to do all that plumbing rework.
And I think we should mention for the record, Dave Berman, our facilities manager, did an outreach. And I think he contacted eight different plumbers. Of course, we started here locally, but because of the nature of the job, kind of the complexity, because we have to be sure it doesn't leak, not just water leaks for damage, but sewage leaks are unacceptable. He received, all the contractors were busy. They did not want to bid on this project, except for Card Plumbing, who will be over here doing another job in the community.
And the amount of the bid is fifty-two thousand dollars for labor and materials.
So, so Mr. Bailey, we're the outreach, and we went out to over eight. We only had one respond, and this is under the seventy-five thousand dollar amount of a contractor in court rules. This is within the guidelines to approve.
Yes, we can.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept the bid of fifty-two thousand dollars, labor and materials from Card Plumbing and Heating Company, contingent upon the contract being signed with time and permit, cost, all that being listed in there, who's responsible. Contingent upon the contract being fully executed. This is just the quote amount, and it has to be, the contract has to be done.
I'll second that.
Most have been made in second to accept the bid award of fifty-two thousand with Card Plumbing and Heating Company. Now, this funds will come out of the county's capital improvement fund. Is that correct?
Right, but I'm not sure if it's a capital. I don't have the number off the top of my head if it's the capital or if it was dollars that were set aside. But either one is appropriate. We have the capital, the one-on-three fund, and then there is some courthouse remodel funds that's payable off some.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's ten minutes after ten. We have a public hearing, road vacation requests. This is the first of two public hearings. And our planning person, Darwin Johnson, is not here. He has a timing method, thank God, for ten. And one of these hearings is for county road number two-one-eight-A within the Lakeview Urban Growth Boundary. It's the road that goes into the Hunter's Hot Springs off of three-nine-five. It's been in the county road system, and he's asking to take it outside of the, take it out of the county road system. And I'll leave the hearing closing on that.
Well, I can give a little bit more of your view if you would like, Mr. Chairman. Darwin is not available today, but did talk to him last night. The first part of whenever Mr. Gullerson was going for a road vacation, it was changed at some point. This road vacation is the lower part. It's not a whole road vacation. There has been opposition from Ms. Playlock. And with that opposition, changed the boundaries of asking for the road vacation. At this time, we do have a map, if anybody here wants to see it, of what this exactly includes. And so, it's a little bit different than the first proposal, but it's followed the process of advertisement and everything correctly, is what Darwin told me last night.
His initial request, if recall, included vacation of that road up to the gate entrance and not to three-nine-five. And I see on there that it goes fully to the three-nine-five right away.
Well, the old one, it's now the area in front of the lodge. And he's showing here the old.
Old proposed.
Proposed for the vacation. He's no longer proposing.
Well, it is a parking area in front of the lodge.
Correct.
So how do you get to the geyser?
Pardon?
If he's closing that off, how do we get to the geyser?
Mark.
If it's gated off, we can't, right?
No. Not sure if that would be gated.
Well, for the hearing process, we'll take testimony.
Can I, can I see the new map for probably?
Yes, please. And in some respects, this, this part, Sarah, should have just been left out. This was the old proposed vacation. It's no longer, it's just this. The road itself is not.
Yeah, the road is not. It's a park.
Or a back, back road.
If Darwin was here, we'd have it up on the screen.
Any comments?
I would like to get, do I state my name for this?
Yes.
Sarah Bunton, and I live on nine-five-five-nine-four Geyser View Lane, adjacent to the property, and the road to be vacated. I'm in opposition of it. Been here close to forty years, lived at the same place on Geyser View. It used to be county road two-eighteen, because it used to go all the way through before it was closed. The amount of tourism that we get, of people wanting to take a picture of the geyser, is a lot. And we all know that that's one of the seventh wonders of our community, is that geyser. And Jim, yes, Jim owns a property. He can gate his property and do whatever he wants to on that part. But I, I feel that we need to give some of these tour visitors that come access, at least to be off the road. On Geyser View, if they go there to take a picture, you guys have signs, no trespassing, so they can't walk. Then opposes, you know, you have little kids getting out to look, or, you know, whoever, right there. And that's, you know, that's, Geyser View's had a lot of traffic on that road now because of the prison and, you know, different entities, official wildlife going through there. So the traffic is fine. And I just feel that it, it would be a loss for county to vacate that road at this point. If Jim really wants to in the county, I would propose that we look at another alternative to keep the geyser open for some kind of public access. The town owns the well on the other side of Geyser View. Maybe there could be a little interpretive center, working with four or two owns, or Jim that owns adjacent. Maybe they could give a little, or Jim could give a little to where the access could be somewhere else. But at this point, unless there's an alternative, I'm in opposition of this. I, I just think, public, regular people here in town, take the kids out in the springtime, feed the geese, feed the ducks. You know, there's, it's always been there. I, I really think the county should hold on to that access until we have an alternative for tourism. You know, the geyser's privately owned, but the visual and camera and getting, keeping people safe to take those pictures is a whole other thing. And, and that is the only option the county has right now, is that road. And I, I'm just in opposition of, there is a lot of tourism here that comes just for that. We have people from all over the world coming to take pictures of the geyser. So it just creates a little opportunity for the county to say, no, we're going to take care of this road, give it at least the opportunity for our locals and for tourism that comes to our community. So that's my opposition. I mean, Jim can do whatever he wants on, on his own property, if he wants to gate it and lock it and do whatever. But I think that part of the county is something special that we need to retain. I hope, I hope. So there's my two cents.
Any other? Frank?
No, I was waving at one of the fellows out. Wave at me and I wave back. I'm sorry.
All right, sorry about that. I found a spot.
Look, while we have your attention, you have. Thank you, sir. That's what the hearing process is for, for people to bring in testimony.
I think so. And, and you, you talked about another hearing. Is it going to be publicized in the paper, or?
We have the option of continuing the hearing.
Or not.
By law, we're only.
Let me jump in, since you're, you're only required to have one hearing on this, but you advertised it as having two hearings. So you're going to have to go with two hearings. That will allow you, in the meantime, to comply with the statute precisely, which is that the road official has to submit a lot of the information that you already have, but it's coming from the planning committee, the planning department. It has to come from the road official. So a lot of times what we do is we have the planning department will give information to the road official, but then we'll make their recommendations. So since you're going to have a second hearing, and that's the only one you really need to have, that'll give you a chance to do these other things that have to be in writing from the road official.
My, my suggestion is, because people don't really know county road two-eighteen-A anymore, and they don't realize that it is the road going into Hunter's. As if you do advertise again, you might say, in parentheses, the road to Hunter's, you know, because a lot of people just don't know that. And the only reason that clued me in was because our road in front of our house is county road two-eighteen-A. And I thought, what are they doing, closing the road? So, so then that's when I came in to talk to Darwin, and he said, no, it's that one. For some reason, on all the flat maps, it's county road two-eighteen-A, because it used to come off the geyser or two-eighteen and come around to the highway. As if it was completely open. And that was a shame that was ever closed, but it was.
So we are just collecting testimony?
Yes.
But I want to get some clarification, Sarah, because I'm taking it that you're talking about. You're in opposition to closing the road from three-nine-five into Hunter's?
Yes.
And that is not being proposed?
No, to, to that place where they can take a picture.
Access.
Yes, right.
Number two.
Yes, all the way, all, all what the county has is the road. Yes, that is what I'm saying to hold on to.
Yeah, earlier I was talking about the road out of three-nine-five, plus that was always presented, and I didn't have time to review this. But it's actually just a parking area.
Right.
It's also is the.
The closest.
Access.
Access, the closest way to take that picture for people and to be safe off the highway or off the road for people to look at the geyser for our tourism. And, and I don't know if the chamber knows any, you know, that's what I, county road two-eighteen did not describe for the significance of that, that place for all of us in our community and people outside the community. It didn't, I, I don't think it informed people enough of what it was. So yes, I'm opposed to any kind of vacating of that road. And unless we have an alternative maybe in the future, yeah. If there is another place where it's a joint between the town and the county, and you, you come off and work, and it's like an interpretive site where people can get off the road, turn their campers around, take pictures of the geyser, and then go. I think, I think that geyser deserves that kind of reputation. You know, it's been here a long time, and everybody loves that geyser in this community. And I think we, we need to appreciate it a little bit more of what we have for tourism.
And I haven't spoken with Jim.
I haven't either.
I'll strive to do that, to find out what his concerns are.
Okay.
But we will have a second hearing.
Jim had the opportunity to be here today to provide testimony, because he's one asking for the road vacation. I'm sort of surprised he's not here.
Right, I would think that he'd want to.
And that's one of the things that the board is supposed to state, is the reasons for the proposed vacation.
And what are the reasons? I guess I don't know.
Yeah, we may not know. You could say that because the landlord requested it, but typically we want a little bit more than that.
Well.
And we have a second hearing, and we should have all that information before the second hearing, along with the road officials.
I'll give you a roadmap. Give me a roadmap.
Do you know when that second hearing is going to be?
Denise, you're the one that brought up two meetings. We have it in two weeks.
That would be a Darwin call, but I would say it would be on seventeen. I would have to double check it. I'd have to check it with Darwin, but that would be my guess.
Seventeenth, ten prime for a second hearing is okay?
Yes, totally fine. Since you only really have, need to have one hearing, whatever you decide to do will be fine.
So have it on the seventeen.
I will confirm that. Darwin will make sure he's agreeing with that. He'll have to get it advertised.
Well, I would say he needs a good reason not to have it. He's not the decision maker. So any other comments on that, that certification request?
Yeah, I mean, it's one of our places. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
The other vacation border is in Silver Lake. It's a plotted but not constructed section of Little Street between Fourth and Fifth Street. Any information on that?
Yeah, Mr. Jones is here. He's the one asking for the vacation. So this property is similar to other ones in the Silver Lake area that has come before us, not too long ago. This is asking for a proposed property vacation of a non-constructed road. Letters went out to adjacent landowners by Darwin. There has been no opposition come in at this time. I'd like to give Mr. Jones an opportunity to explain, and he's submitted some pictures for the record. Denise, you've got those. Explain the reason why. You can come up, Mr. Jones, if you'd like, and explain the reasoning for asking for this vacation.
You guys have got pictures of the old shacks there. Those are on your county property. And I walked into my attorney's office and went through this, and he says, oh, yeah, sure, you just put a big brick and line your hand in the block and start tearing those down. And you might as well go down and start tearing down the courthouse, too, because those are on county property. And at that point, I went, well. So now we have Linda and Alan, they're adjacent to us. They said, yes, that's a good idea to clean it up and get it put out there. And we have Steve and Constance Johnson, they're on the other side. So all of the adjacent landowners are in agreement to clean it up, get the old fences on there, get some decent fences, and tear the old structures down, clean it up. That's number one. Number two, every, the people that are on the east side of Fifth Street, on the same street, have two sewer systems running out there through it. There's no problem. It's closed off. It's approved. No, no thing. Two and a half blocks down, hand, and just went through here, and he was, he was up and do, he's had it closed off, Saint Street. And he is, there's a lot of putting his sewer system down through there. So in these old houses that we're dealing with here in the center of town, trying to bring back, so to speak, we have to have a certain amount of footage in order to legally put these sewer systems in. This allows both Linda and Alan and me the available footage to do that and to legally put down a new sewer system, new well, and have that the way it's supposed to be. Then we can go ahead with what you're saying there. And there's something else I should be saying here, but basically, we're trying to clean up the middle of town. And I'm surprised we don't have people hanging down the tree.
So you are aware that if it gets through the process and it is vacated, is that half goes to each landlord?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
And so this, this, the shanty that's on there that needs to go away, is it on both people's property at that time?
Yeah, old fencing and garbage and stuff like that over there. I've got buildings and fencing on mine. The people behind have remnants of an old barn that fell down back there on there. So, yeah, all of those still.
And so through the hearing process, if it was vacated, you, acceptable to taking care of the cleanup and everything?
Absolutely. That's what I'm looking for.
So the three properties that would gain that extra ground and be able to do those things are Doors, Westrooks and Johnson?
Yep.
Yep.
And was this one advertised for two hearings, too, for Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
So by advertisement, we have to have another hearing? Hate to have you travel down for another hearing, but that's the process we're in with this. I'm not sure this is, if it's, I'd just be a public way. It's not, it's non-constructed, so it's not technically a county road, but we have jurisdiction if it is a public way. We'll check it out a little bit more, but we are the authority to come forward.
Now, we do need a second public hearing that is syndicated. I'll meet him in Silver Lake since September.
Do you want to put him off that one, or do you want to put him on a safety schedule?
No, it's advertised as a date already, it's made specific.
I don't know if it's been advertised, this is like, they just says first of two public hearings.
I'm just putting it out there for innovation.
For, for the fourteenth? Or the seventeenth?
No, this one here.
Right, but was there a, a second date?
Without our planning director here that doesn't advertise, we, we don't know exactly what he advertised. We could grab a paper, probably, or not.
Send that in vote.
You hear from what I say, right?
I'll double check to make sure that we don't have anything at ten-ten, otherwise we could set it again at ten-ten on the seventeenth. I'd go to fight Darwin to let him know.
Well, I don't know that you would need to come back for the hearing. You've already heard his position, so.
Yep.
Get him on my guy. Because basically, this is the same thing as in the books.
So would it be fine with you if we have the hearing on the seventeenth of August and you don't attend, unless you just want to?
Either me or Alan or someone.
Yeah, it's up to you.
He could also call in.
Yeah. We could give you a call in, but no problem.
Your presence isn't required. You've already made your statement, so come back if you want to, but you don't have to.
We probably do need to note that one letter of support was received this morning.
Yeah.
Being, you know? Yeah. Yeah.
Kristen?
You know, if there's a way to find out, is it advertised for two or are we going to have two?
Well, you may advertise it here on your agenda, but that's the problem.
Oh, I'm going to end up, okay, okay.
Plus, we still need to have your written, your written report, so.
Okay. We're going to have two hearings. I was trying to find a way to get through today, but we're going to have two hearings.
Suggestion, just a suggestion, do we want to have it on the seventeenth as in two weeks? Or do we want to wait until September just for chance of other folks?
I, I, I'll wait. I think he, times of essence, the sooner the better for him to start taking that part.
Yeah. What I'm going to do, you know, basically, two is we'll be in the stuff on the table. That, that old barn wood.
Yes, well, it doesn't matter because.
Get it out there. Go right what happens. I can't really say that for the.
Okay.
If it's up on there, say that, I could advise you to go ahead, but, yeah.
So my recommendation is to continue the hearing. Well, we have closed it, but it will be to continue the hearing to our next regular board meeting.
On the seventeenth.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you, guys.
And Denise said we did receive another four hour records from Christine Jones, Field Box Two Zero Four, Silver Lake area.
Love to see people's improvement in communities like this, Mr. Jones. Very nice.
Hey, sure. I worked fifty-one years for my social security and my wife is retired. And, and that's going to be done perfect. It's going to be small, more growing. Taxes are going to be outrageous and it's something we can keep up and keep together. Comfortable.
Yeah, perfect.
Yep.
And you would use them or do you turn to this one? Doing a very nice job there.
I'm excited to see the fun all over. Good for you guys. A lot of people take something old and make it new.
Well, I'll ask for any other comments on both of those topics in the hearing. Not hearing any comments, I'll post a hearing on both of the submissions, the vacation. Next caller.
That's unbelievable, workmanship. You're perfectionist, obviously. Very nice. You're the, you're the one, there you go. I'm going to have to stop by sometime to catch you there.
I'm going to have to talk to you, you're coming to the page of where I live.
Thank you guys very much. This is really, this is a good chance, nobody probably got a few to look at. It feels beautiful.
No, it's glass, it's kind of.
Oh, yeah, it looks fine. Denise sent it to me late yesterday.
Okay.
Glass is pretty liquid.
Yeah, I looked at it, it's fine. Longer than yesterday.
Turning the face.
Steel. It all depends on the temperatures.
It's not too, you know, as we age, the way we laugh, what we do, because then we can't tell how bad our eyes are looking.
It's, it's that character. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
As mentioned, the hearing is closed on both of those. We have a second hearing on the seventeenth. The other topic is the. Fish Creek Rim Tower, O'Donnell.
Mr. Chairman, yesterday we went over this. I asked and requested for legal counsel to take a look at it before we ratified the signatures on it. I sidehired with legal counseling, he has done that. So I'll move to approve intergovernmental, how you pronounce that? Colocation?
Co-location.
Co-location. Agreement between Lake County and?
O'Donnell.
It is O'Donnell, okay, O'Donnell.
This is a case that, I think it's the Horizon Tower above Edel, that O'Donnell has some used each ownership and the sheriff department has some used each, and it's a pretty much a financial swamp. Was there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Mr. Sheldon, second, can you hear the discussion?
I just wanted, Mr. Bailey is, I think, going to say something before we cut too far into this.
It might be hypothetical, but to close the hearing on the road vacation?
I do.
Okay. We were siding more. Yep, thank you.
I have another comment on this.
All right, thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Harris. Other topic is meeting minutes.
There are four sets. May twenty, May thirty-one, June one, and June seven.
And you guys have a chance to look at this?
I hope so.
Have you had a chance to look at this?
I have, I cannot lie, no, I have not.
And I don't have time either. So we have all those.
Yeah, thank you for giving them, and I just haven't had a chance to review them, it's busy.
Been a little busy without me to help.
Yes.
And I wrote.
And, you know, I usually help because I have a few of these. I just, I, I'm not really, sorry.
They were table three, those said minutes until the seventeenth. Anything legal for open session, Jim?
No, we have two for executive session.
And those two are?
Litigation.
Litigation. And at this time, we, we said from open session, I'm going to the executive session under ORS one nine two point six six zero two.